Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting of November 10, 2014. Just a reminder, if there is a requirement or emergency, please leave the building, exit out from near the building, be in a vehicle, please do not move it until the subject of my services is present. Also, this is not spoken building, so you must, you must not do it here, you must do it out there. Just, just one other reminder, it's tomorrow's Veterans Day. The Veterans Day ceremony starts four points at 10:30 and ends probably 11 o'clock, 11:11. So, hopefully you'll be there, if any of you happen to be at the period yesterday when they had the, the suite of that ones, the Atlanta Wind Symphony, and they played primarily Susan, Stars and Stripes, Washington Post, the rest of them. It was just a wonderful one. We didn't see it this year, but really look out for it next year because it is just so much fun, I don't know to the user, it wasn't great.
It was.
It was big and crowded, it was good too. Yeah, about eight hundred feet out there.
Yeah.
It was just a distance. Yeah, bring it home to a player. It was, it was just a lovely night. Not as good as Dad's, too, but. Village Board.
Yes, good evening, everybody, and happy Veterans Day to all those veterans tomorrow. Thank you for your service. Approve the board meeting minutes of October 27, 2014, please.
Motion to accept is presented.
All right, I have a, just one, one more, let me re-correct it on page three. It says that generator, and it should be that generation. So, Paul was talking about the wheels going, are they?
But it's a generator.
Which, which?
It's the, it's the second from the bottom, they are on the area, it's the last sentence.
Oh, I got it.
Motion to accept is presented.
Motion, second.
Motion, third.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna start tonight with the, with the bills, and then I need approval for something else, then I'm gonna introduce Chris Reno, who's a partner with our auditing firm. But we're gonna start with the bills, the period of October 31 through November 10, they total 357,200.37. I do have one additional bill for approval, which I was just handed tonight, and that is for more contracting and consulting, and that's the third payment on the roof of Patchogue Theater, that's the 35,560. The five largest bills, that would be the first, the second one would be Cullen and Danaski for our 2014 order, 28,000. The third is Eastern Resource, 22,246.69, waste disposal. The fourth would be PSENG, our electric bill, 17,201.32. And the fifth would be all service electric, a work at our whole field, 16,032.99. If I could have approval of those bills, please.
Motion to accept, second.
David?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I would like to introduce Chris Reno, who's a partner with Cullen and Danaski, which is our auditing firm. They finished our audit through the period of May 31, 2014, and Chris is gonna review the audit by us. Okay.
Uh, Chris.
Can anybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Anyway, I'm hired by the board to render an opinion on their financial statements, to provide reasonable assurance that they are relatively free material in the statements. That's in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We also should issue another report on the internal controls over the financial reporting under generally accepted government auditing standards. We also issue a report on the federal monies they receive, known as the federal single audit. Then there's a couple other letters that we also issue that are separate. The first one would be on material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. The village does not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so therefore that letter is not issued. And then, we also take into consideration what the control is looking at, what the state audits, and what we'll do is we'll put that into like a management letter, just so the board's aware of things that the control is gonna be going after. But basically, there's no real issues here, just they cite firms, you know, you know, segregation duties, so there's like one, just one comment on computer controls, and that's about it. So, that's really good, because some villages have pages and pages of management comments, sometimes they're never addressed. So, anyway, so I just handed back this report, I came to see it last year, just updated for the current year. Basically, the village operated at almost break even, small loss of about $60,000, which means expenditures exceeded the revenues. And if you look on the column 2013, down to the second to last, but wrong, that's, what do you call it, half a million dollars? That's, that was, is used to balance the budget, so you were really anticipating on losing a half a million dollars in the year, but you only did 60, so that's, that's good. And based on that, that means you maintained your fund balance roughly, so we're still about 30% of next year's budget, which is excellent. And, you know, and, you know, you spent your budget right on, you know, you came up close like a, around 157 under, which is, it's good, you're monitoring your budget. On the revenue side, you did have additional federal aid that you received for hurricane damages, so that helped you out this year, and, but basically, it was where we're at, as far as the audit goes. Anybody have any questions?
The comment about the controls for the software, what have you, do you find that a lot in small villages?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, because, you know, you'd only deal with, you know, X number of people. And to have somebody else, you know, have the controls of one thing, not the others, it's almost virtually impossible, as long as there's some kind of oversight, someone's looking.
I mean, for us, so I, for us to alleviate that comment, you would have to spend so much money for other personnel.
Right.
This doesn't make sense for us.
Yeah, correct.
But as far as anything else, there's nothing else out there you see that we have a problem with?
No, everything seems to be in order, you're gonna have a solid staff over there.
Well, I think one of the things, too, is that we have in surplus, 3.6 million dollars. What we did last year, there was a 3.7, we took 500,000 dollars of that, and put it into the budget for the upcoming year, and we'll do the same thing, essentially 600,000 that we put in, and stabilize, so we take money from our surplus and put it into the budget, so that we can manage to keep the taxes as low as we can keep them. You know, you hear a lot of talk about surpluses and fruitions. I think there's a very misunderstanding, even on that level, what surplus is a force. What got us through the hurricane without having to borrow any money was the surplus we had. What gets us through the winters and the storms that we had is the surplus we had. The sort of ability to manage our money that allows us to move funds from surplus on a yearly basis to tax stabilization. So, last year, the taxes were about 2. something percent, you know, and we put 600,000 dollars in making sure, so you can continue to provide the services, do the things we do, you know, whether it's in the parks, new playground equipment, whether it's on Main Street, and we hear the issues sometime with public safety, you know, weekends, being able to put additional people on, it all comes out of our ability to manage our dollars during the course of the year, and create enough of a surplus to protect the residents. You know, you go up now onto Oxford Road, the paving of Oxford Road, the other page is the city. So, there's always this negative that you hear about surpluses, but they're tremendously, tremendously important, the solvency of, you know, what we're able to deal with. Without that, and without the hard work of Treasurer Mr. Crozier, and more importantly, Edgar and Marty, and her staff, and his office, I think they do talk about that a number of times, the quality of what we should get out of it.
Oh, yeah, excellent.
Now, the other thing to realize with this audit, this audit then is that it's the state, it's the state mandated or accorded. It's not, it's not done because we particularly want to spend 28,000 dollars, it's done because of state law, this is the mandate, so. Chris, I thank you very much, any other issues you see within it that?
Well, you know, I'm in constant communication with you guys all year round, so if something else comes to my attention, I would definitely reach out to you.
What was, I have one question on the total sale of property. We have 70,000 dollars. Who's the, who's the?
The bitch, though.
Pitch 19?
We approve the sale of, sale of surplus.
Wasn't that paid for by the bank?
No.
Do you have the bank?
No, 70,000 is insurance you covered.
Yes, insurance.
Insurance.
Yeah. Because it, because it is damaged.
67, that's insurance.
That's just, yeah, that's just a heading that says yes.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
So, be more relieved.
Any, any questions for the public, which we have? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Right.
Chris.
You know, we have, we have been at the Land of Audits for this past, past year, from feeble audits, financial audits, the EPA audits. We've talked about the EPA audits various times. I, some people have come to me and said that they were reading things online, how we're polluting or repaying upon this EPA audit. I wish the people that were writing those things, and making those assumptions, could sit down and talk to myself, or talk to village attorney, don't understand what the audit was about. If you don't, we had 22 deficiencies that the EPA cited this morning. With our last submission, twisted by Cornell, and by a consultant that we have online, we down to four letters. But I'd like to read you some of the headings of those. Development procedures for documenting and maintaining records. Required third-party party certifications, present an annual report, submit the EPA and EDC certification, third-party certificates. Conduct a self-assessment, submit an annual report, submit EPA and DC certification. Bill verify stormwater outfalls. Develop a program to inform municipal employees and businesses of the general public. Develop a written procedures for receipt. Now, these will be completed. Development inventory of post-construction stormwater management practices. Submit a certification that the self-assessments were completed, and they were completed. Requirements submitted bi-monthly progress reports, aligning activities completed. Require a developer written program to detect and eliminate illicit discharges completed. Require a developer written program to address non-stormwater discharges completed. Require a developer written program that provides equivalent, yeah, equivalent protection to the New York State, New York D E C Speeds Construction General Committee completed. Requirement to develop procedures for SWIP review for both construction and post-construction completed. Requirement to develop a written program that describes procedures for site maintenance completed. Develop a program that ensures long-term operation and maintenance of management practices completed. Requirement to develop pollution prevention and housekeeping program completed. Requirement to develop employee pollution prevention and good housekeeping training program completed. Requirement to develop an updated SWAP report in progress. You know, if you listen, you're all right, you just read it. You know, development proceeds for documenting and maintaining records in progress, requirements for third-party certifications in progress, and requirements to submit EPA and EDC certification and third-party. Every one of them is papered to you, none of them refer to anything to do with polluting of the Patrick River, the polluting of the bay, or any of those things. It's purely and simply an audit of procedures. I really get tired of hearing from people that I read on this blog, or I read on this comment, that this happened or that happened, when people never, ever ask the question about what it's about. All they do is make an assumption, if there's a question, and a true question, not, not a criticism, but a question of process asked, that's all I can ask you to do. But to have it out there, the witch supposedly polluting the river, polluting the bay, is unconscionable. You know, it's unconscionable at best, and it's a downright lie at its worst. And so, you know, if you read stuff, and you don't understand it, whether it be this, whether it be the, the village audit, we have a feeble audit that's coming back to us, we have another controller's audit on fire issues that's coming back to us, any questions on any of those things? You know, if the black sheep's out front, I'm inside, but I think it's, it's time people began to ask the right questions, that they're not condemned for the wrong reasons. Okay, public hearing.
Notice of the public hearing before the board of trustees, please take notice of the board of trustees of the Village of Patchogue, pursuant to chapter 435, section 435-17A3 and 435-80 of the Code of the Village of Patchogue, shall consider an application to convert the use of 129 River Avenue, section 129-29, from a single-family dwelling to a multiple-family dwelling. If you require any information prior to the scheduled hearing date, please appear in person of Village 12, 12 Baker Street, or person interested in proposed application for change of use will be given an opportunity to be heard on November 10, 2014, 6 p.m., Village 12, 12 Baker Street, Patchogue, New York.
Back in what was, remember, coordinating day, yes, yeah, what was 2014, we had a public hearing where we took the portions of River Avenue that were Zone D2 business, and changed it to C residents, which is a multi-family residence. The purpose of that was, is that probably, if you go down that block, if there are 20 homes on that block, 19 of them are multi-family homes right now. 19 of them are in some sort of disrepair, and all of them are non-comfulming uses. So, what we decided, that public hearing, for those who do, we had discussions really about making it conforming to what it was, or what it is, not what it was, which is that D2 business. And this is a request, 129 River Avenue is a two-family, has been converted and rebuilt. If you know the home, it's the first home on the right, and you make the turn, go on River Avenue, right next to the tracks on, on the east side. And it's been turned into a two-family. So, this is the public hearing about that version, they've created a conformity with the C residents, which is, which is a deal. Any questions by the board, or comments, questions?
It's a big, practical job done in that house, I really.
Beautiful.
There was one a little further north on the other opposite side, they also did a really good job, so, yeah, great improvement there.
It really is. But any other questions, questions for the public? Motion to accept, is the change?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion, favor?
Aye.
So, carry it. Okay. Request approval to refund Dave and Anne Development LLC, 28,998.96, for previously approved tax social unit settlement. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion, favor?
Aye.
So, carry it. Okay. Request approval to refund Dave and Anne Development LLC, 28,998.96, for previously approved tax social unit settlement. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion, favor?
Aye.
So, carry it. Laurie, I'm gonna ask you to go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have representatives of the Garden Club here, please, as well as, we're gonna do this now, as well as an artist, Dave Rogers, who lives in Art Space. Dave recently completed a sculpture, and it's installed in the garden, where there used to be an urn, that I believe had cracked. And the Garden Club is kind enough to gift this to the village, and it will be our responsibility to take care of it and keep it in good shape. So, I have the gift agreement here, which was signed by the Garden Club and the mayor. It lays out the conditions of, and Mark Jeffers, the president of the Garden Club, read this and agreed to it, so I don't think I need to read it in the record or anything. So, I'd like to, would, shall I have everybody come up? I'd like to have, let me go down, so, I just wanted to introduce Dave and thank him. Well, maybe Dave will tell us, yes, Dave will tell us about the sculpture. So, anyway, just introduce yourself, this is Dave Rogers.
My name is Dave Rogers, I'm a sculpture installation artist, and I moved to Patchogue about a year ago. I was happy to be able to complete this project for the garden, for the Village of Patchogue, when the Garden Club came to me and asked me about doing this sculpture. And the sculpture itself is made out of donated pieces of metal from members of the Garden Club and locals, who I know who live in the area. I did get offers for donations from other areas, and I said, no, I really want to keep all the metal from this area right here, to make it really special. The idea behind the sculpture is to reflect on growth, so the sculpture itself is entitled Reflections on Growth, and it's about the reflections of growth in the Village of Patchogue, that even I've seen, just living here for a year, and hearing about the history of Patchogue. And so, there's a lot of incorporation, also of, you'll see garden tools and things like that, because the Garden Club, obviously, you see around Patchogue, is very active and busy within Patchogue, and trying to make it beautiful, so I wanted to incorporate some of that into it, and I hope that everybody gets a chance to go by and see the sculpture. It stands at, I believe, 10 feet on its stand where it is now, so, it's three feet wide and 10 feet tall.
I have a question, as I saw it up close for the first time yesterday. You've got those two sections, and then what, what are the things on top? They look like?
Those are ceramic, actually.
Are they? That's what I said to my aunt.
Lisa Di Stefano, who is an Art Space resident also, me and her talked together, because I do a lot of small public sculptures, and I have gotten into ceramics in the last couple of years, and I've been looking for a way to incorporate ceramics into my metal public sculptures. So, Lisa did the two domes that are sitting on top, which represent water. So, the top part is changed, or goes into these domes, which represents water, which is, you know, a symbol of life and a symbol of growth for artists, so I wanted to represent that into the sculpture as well.
No, I, you know, I just think that, whether you're Art Space or yourself, or the Garden Club, what you people have brought in this community, this sense of, whether we're, we're a center for the arts, we're a center for entertainment, we're a center for beauty, we, with what the Garden Club does, it just has become extremely important. And Lisa got out herself, really proud that you're part of the piece of what's going on, and when people like yourself can influence, where, where'd you live before, what'd you do in all of this, haven't you?
I, yes, I grew up in Manhattan, so I'm not from Long Island at all, and I was in the Army for 14 years, I traveled the world, I lived overseas for about 14 years total, in the Army, and afterwards in China for seven years. So, I'm new to Long Island, only been here three years, and a year at Patchogue.
But it didn't take you too long to become quite a world of the arts, we very, very much appreciate, appreciate your effort, appreciate what you give back to the community. So, Dave, thank you very, very much.
No problem, and if there's ever any problems with the sculpture, just contact me, and I can repair it on site, it's not a problem.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk a little bit, still want to talk about doing something down in the parks.
Oh, yes, definitely.
These are some good ideas, because after you talked to me, showed me a few things.
Yes, and you know, we're working on the mural, I've seen the, the mural is almost, the outline is pretty much done.
It looks great.
Yeah, so the mural's coming along also, so, we want to keep adding art to the village as much as we can, so thank you.
Very important, thank you very much.
Yes, David, most importantly, do you love being a resident of the Patchogue?
I do, I will tell you, the reason why I moved to Patchogue, and not because of Art Space, there's 35 Art Space across the country, the reason I moved to Patchogue, since I've moved on Long Island, Patchogue is the only village where the mayor, the trustees, people, big businesses in the village are very supportive of the arts, and to me, that's very important, because even other towns that have lots of arts, their village stays out of it, they don't care. So, that was important for me, and that's the reason why I moved to Patchogue.
That's great.
Let's commence with what, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, good evening.
Thank you.
We just want to bring up, one other thing, too, is that we do have a celebrity in the audience, is Paula Murphy, who is Chamber of Commerce's Woman of the Year. Thank you, Paula.
While we're on Garden Club, I know Carol, we want to come up now and just let everybody know.
We did, the Garden Club is also very excited, very excited.
Yeah, we need to name it after you.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Carol Teglia, I'm not actually a member of the village, I'm an East Patchogue.
That's okay.
But I'm very involved with the chamber and the Garden Club, and have been for a very long time. But one of the functions of the Garden Club is to community outreach and to do things for the community, and many, many years ago, there was a Historic Houses of Worship tour, that was actually, I think, put on by the village and the Historical Society, and I was now on that tour, and I was so excited about it, and everyone I spoke to that went on that tour, and that was a big fortune, I think she still speaks about how wonderful it was. So, I was determined this year, we've been talking about it, to make it happen again, and I'm here to say that it is going to happen.
And squeezing is when I think of that, protecting it originally, that one.
So, on December 7, starting at 2:00 in the afternoon, at the Garden Club's gazebo, we will begin the tour, and right now, we have commitments from five of churches, and the St. Valda Houses of Worship. So, we will start at the United Methodist Church, walk in to St. Paul's, from St. Paul's, we'll go to Emmanuel Lutheran, Emmanuel Lutheran, we'll go to the Congregational, and then we'll end up at Temple Death Bell. And each one of those places, the pastors of the erudites of that, I will discuss, talk about their church and their traditions. We are working with the chamber to try to divide a trolley for those people who may not be able to walk, so that's something that we're working on. Unfortunately, St. Francis had a schedule and issues, so they cannot participate, and also waiting to get back from, they can't leave the chamber, there's, I was back, I didn't find out until the other day that there is a church up on Martha Schenandoah, just a little bit more, the Rises, which no one was looking to, that they don't pay you.
I think it's the Seventh Day Adventist.
I, I'm very glad, we reached after them, and they may have been.
That'd be nice.
And of course, it's been totally free except for Cambridge, so.
Oh, that's true. Oh, that's great.
What was the date?
December 7, it's a Sunday afternoon at 2:00.
Are you familiar?
Refreshments, that was St. Valda.
The sculpture on the lawn of Temple Death Bell was created by my college professor.
Oh, oh, you know that.
Yeah? I moved here, and drove down Oak Street and went. I think I watched him maybe come over a while.
And of course, it's been totally free except for the Kingdom, right?
Oh, that's true. Oh, that's great.
What was the date?
December seventh, it's a Sunday afternoon at two o'clock.
Are you familiar? Refreshments at the St. Paul's. The sculpture on the lawn of Temple of the Bell was created by my college professor.
Oh, oh, you know that?
I moved here, and drove down Oak Street and went. I think I watched him maybe come over a lot. I've just, I, when he built that, I, I live here, so it's around.
So we hope you all can attend, and we look forward to doing this.
Thank you, Mary.
One of the things I mentioned, we're going to, Mr. Egan has said that he can donate whatever lights were short. We're going to light up the tree in the Garden Club, on Terry Street, with some white lights, I think is whichever, is it tennis?
Yeah, we had three cases of the white lights.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna tell you, tell me how you got it, I just wanted to hear it for the money.
Yeah, my office would be very happy, my secretary's here, but that tree feels so lonely or.
Right. That's great. I just approximated. That's a great trip. I'd like to just comment also that Mark Jeffers, who's the president of the Garden Club, just walked in.
Hi, Laurie.
Introduce him. I already did the exchange.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I heard it was six-thirty, so I apologize for being late.
No problem.
So yours, it's yours, enjoy it.
Thank you for everything. It's ours. Thanks, Carol.
You know, as you told me just about things that are happening, on Thanksgiving Eve, at the Lutheran Church up on Jane Avenue, there's an ecumenical um, service that's held, and each one of the Temple, Congregation Church, St. Paul's, obviously Lutheran Church, Emmanuel, all the pastors of those churches will be up there. And it is, it's about thirty-five minutes to an hour, but it really, they each have a reading, and I used to a little bit of talking about what Thanksgiving is all about. It is really a wonderful, I've done it every year. Last year, I was, I was in Colorado, I've done it every year that I've been at office, except for last year. And it really, if you have the time, if you really wanna begin the holiday season, as you should begin the holiday season, it is really a wonderful, wonderful um, activity to do. It's the Lutheran Church, it's up on Jane Avenue, towards Little Jane Avenue, go all the way up, it's on the right-hand side, and uh, Steve, you know, it just, sometimes you do some things that just really make you feel good when you're there with them, and that is one of those things.
What time was that?
It's Thanksgiving.
Seven o'clock, two twenty-six.
Then it starts at uh, seven o'clock. Uh, BID.
Thank you, Mr. Egan.
Yeah, we, we didn't motion it. Oh, we need to motion the uh, Garden Club's. You did the send, we didn't motion.
All right, motion to.
Motion to accept the gift agreement is presented.
Second. On your favor?
Now it's official.
The mayor, trustees, the courts, there's plenty of you guys, ladies and gentlemen, Dennis Smith, the very brief BID report. We have two projects that are still working with the uh, New York Main Street grant as we want that down. I'm a contractor, it's fireless at the end of December. Uh, those, both those projects are interior, it's forty-sixth East Main Street, and one East Main Street, the good type of style, as I said, uh, they should be done by mid-December, within the contract period, and then uh, that's some sixty days after that, to file paperwork and officially post the uh, the contract with the state down. The other part of that is the beautification on this Main Street, and I said it the last week, and we had the benches in. I'm gonna be with Joe Dean and Lou on Wednesday, we're gonna have replacement, and Joe assures me that the, the four benches and the two drag receptionists will be put in about a middle of the night next week.
Nice.
So that'll be complete. Uh, I'm looking to do a walkthrough early next week with GC Security for the camera placement, that we were talking about, the security uh, camera placement. Once we do that walkthrough, we get a good idea of exactly what is needed, or, or any problems that, that could possibly arise, and the trans levels. I would hope to have the installations shortly there, like within a week to, to ten days.
How many cameras are you thinking of, or are you still?
Excuse me?
How many cameras?
There's three.
Just three?
There's three.
But how many, there's a number of them here, you know, make sure you're ready.
Right. That is.
Oh, different businesses.
Right. So, so the hope would be that in time, we can incorporate anybody who's willing into the uh, the system that we have. Then a conversation I have with Mary, she may have money for a fourth, which would be great, because if you look at the, at the Jones, we're going to four corners, it's not a square, it's, it's got that, 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 it's on an angle. So in order to encompass South Ocean, North Ocean, and West Bay Street, you'd really need two cameras there, unless we can put one.
Maybe you can look and see what bright tech camera has?
You know, I know we've talked about this, and I think Tom Ferb, I thought he looked into it.
I'll take, if you remind me, I'll get a hold of that, because theirs looks straight down North Ocean Avenue.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that would, that would, that would be the home right there. But once we get that done, you know, that would be the start. I'm sure as we do the budget for next year, we would budget more monies into that. I know I did receive a, a email from John Bojack, and there might be funding out there, I'm trying to check that out now, from other, you know, grant-type funding that would come from other, other entities. Uh, but this will get us started. We get it started, and we can build from there, so we'll hopefully get that starting to get kicked off next week. The last thing I have is the hanging baskets. We need to get the cold letters out in December, and we're gonna have the hanging baskets from the world, as we always do. Now Paula, Murphy, and Karen Ferb, myself, Dave Vigilata, and Dave Tiffett met a couple weeks ago to discuss this year's hanging baskets. This year's were better than last year and the year before, but we started going over break, we kinda crashed and burned it at the end, at the end. We're gonna come up with a new basket, it's gonna have a different, it's hopefully gonna have a better reservoir or ability to hold water. There's gonna be a different soil issues, and in this cold letter, we're gonna put fertilization of these twice a year, because I think that, that was a misstep that we made this year. We really didn't fertilize these things after we put them up, so what could you expect? That will be in the cold letter, and it'll be done by the person who provides them, and I'm gonna put in a one-day training period for each driver that we have, because whenever you talk about these baskets with whomever approved before us, the first thing you hear is they're not being watered properly. So we're gonna try to get that done and take that, that obstacle out of the way you're on. So I'll give you more on that, we're gonna go with two colors, we haven't decided yet, but that was the, the better choice than we had last year. And as we put it together and get nearer, put it with us out, I'll keep you apprised of how we're going with that. And like I said, it was brief, I don't have a lot else, unless there's any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, let's talk about the next event that the Chambers got going on, and that's our annual Christmas holiday boat parade. Uh, we can play Sunday, November the twenty-third, the parade will start at six P.M. Uh, you know, the viewing stations those day, the best areas for viewing is the Stan Spitt Marina, uh, and also the Far Round National Seashore's Watchell Ferry Terminal site. At both locations, there will be some entertainment, so we do encourage people to come on down, uh, you know, anytime after four o'clock, enjoy some of the activities prior. Uh, and also, prior to the parade itself, the day before the parade, as we come now with tradition the last few years, uh, the bar restaurants along the Patchogue River will be hosting what they're calling parade preview parties. Uh, many of the boats will already be decorated, uh, and be parked at the different marinas, uh, at the different restaurants, uh, and there will be transportation to get the uh, people who come on down to travel to all the different places, uh, view some of the boats that are already decorated, and even uh, be able to cash your ballot to who you, what is called the People's Choice Award that they give out on Sunday. So, you know, again, believe it or not, we're uh, you know, it's nineteen ninety-three with the first year, so it's uh, you know, we're talking twenty-five years or so that this parade's been going on, and uh, it's, we've really become a big annual tradition for us. Uh, next, I wanna highlight, the Chambers very excited about some uh, holiday promotions that we're doing for the holiday season this year, uh, and starts on uh, November the twenty-ninth, Saturday after Thanksgiving, uh, is now known, thanks to the efforts of American Express, a Small Business Saturday. It's a day that we really focus on going to shop local, shopping your local businesses, support your local merchants. Uh, so certainly on that day, uh, as we did last year, we're going to have some music on the streets, some bands, Tri Valley Grands Band will be performing, uh, the St. Joseph's Glee Club will be doing some caroling up and down the street, uh, and of course, there'll be uh, great sales and specials at all our uh, retail stores and our restaurants as well. Following up on that, uh, we will do a special, what we're gonna call our Holiday Discount Card Day. Uh, last year, as you may be aware, we joined with Beltport to create a, a Beltport Patchogue Chamber Discount Card. Uh, so we'll have, uh, again, we'll have some entertainment on the street, some holiday uh, music, as well as a, a station where you can get your free holiday uh, discount card, uh, you can just sign for it right up for it on the street, and then again, it'll be December the sixth. And then following that, on December the thirteenth, we're really excited about this, uh, this is something that just came together last week, where we're joining forces with the Oakdale Chamber, the Sable Chamber, Bayport Blue Point Chamber, and the Beltport Chamber, uh, to uh, have what we're gonna call Shop South Shore on the Downtown Express. Uh, this is where we'll be utilizing two trolleys that will take people uh, back and forth to all those communities. Again, each community will be sponsoring some uh, special holiday activities that day as well, so it'll really be an excellent day to promote uh, shopping uh, on your local downtowns along the South Shore. And I wanna say that really what brought this together, uh, was the county executive getting the Chambers together to start talking about this race uh, next September, the Southern County Marathon. So this is kind of a lead-in, that we might see this uh, come, uh, you know, we're working on maybe having a South Shore Business Alliance that might grow, will become a permanent uh, organization that's gonna grow out of this, but this will be our first event, it'll be a lot of fun. Uh, and then of course, we're capping off the holidays, we'll do one update, Midnight on Main Street is moving well, uh, our Kickstarter campaign is up and running, and uh, and hundreds of dollars have already started to be committed to. Uh, most recently, trustee Lori Devlin, I know, has uh, committed, we appreciate that. Uh, and we have had thirty thousand visits on the site, so if we could do a little better, I mean, if everybody gave a dollar to visit the site, we'd have this year and next year taking care of it, so.
What's the site, Midnight, what's the site?
Uh, it's uh, Kickstarter, is the name of the, and it just, and if you go there, Midnight on Main Street.
Midnight on Main Street.
Yeah, and then uh, our midnight, it's S.T. period, uh, the Midnight on Main Street, the main name, we spelled the street out, it was Ernakeen, so we took the S.T. period one, just uh, sometimes it gets sent to that one. Uh, but yeah, just, you know, five dollars, whatever you could donate, uh, it all goes for, for what's gonna be a wonderful event. Uh, just, again, just a couple of quick things about uh, some Chamber activities, uh, the Chambers holding our next networking event, November the nineteenth, at Breaking Out Ballroom. Uh, that's the dance studio that is where the old Orffner Murray used to be, right next to the Verka Shack. So from five to seven P.M., there'll be a little cocktail reception, uh, there'll obviously be some uh, business space for all our businesses to promote themselves, uh, and Breaking Out Ballroom will do some dance routines and some, uh, even some free dance lessons as well, so it'll be a, a fun night to come on out and uh, and join with the Chamber. And then our annual, excuse me, our monthly um, general meeting will be Tuesday, November the twenty-fifth, at Barbecue at six P.M. Uh, that night, we're gonna have a presentation from Mary Russo on the uh, update of all the activities of the, the Coed, as well as one of our businesses, Serve Pro, uh, to talk about how a business can uh, better prepare itself for uh, emergencies and the like. And unless anybody else has got any questions, that's my report for today.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, could be mayors in here, but like I said earlier, if you go up to the show and submit a review, trustee Keys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow board members, ladies and gentlemen, a few comments on my wish list. Um, a couple of interesting meetings over the last few weeks, for my, someone not, oh, that'd just be, uh, at St. Joe's College about two weeks ago, um, went to a meeting where they were gonna discuss dredging the lake, and, I mean, we were hoping for a lot more when it came, to be honest with you, we thought it was gonna be somebody who had money for us to do some work, you know, but uh, St. Joe's College looks like they wanna get a little involved in trying to dredge out the lake, but um, I don't see that happening really too soon. Edgar Vane was there, he can comment on the problems they had when they dredged, when they happened the lake, and it was a lot more involved than what, you know, it sounds really nice, "Yeah, we're gonna dredge the lake," and then we start getting into the.
Was that because of the millipole supply?
Uh, there was like, and I don't slightly ask me those questions, but it was by mine made, I mean, things that, that there was, that there was a lot of problems, but I mean, we had to spoil it and all that kind of stuff, it was everywhere, geographic stuff. So anyway, that one, but prior to that, we, I mean, we had been talking, and I know Patty Steele and I and Joe were talking, they're maybe purchasing a couple of those um, sprays, you know, for water sprays, but actually, while they're pretty, they also help air it. It's small, it's a start, it's something decorative, but, no, they're not that cheap, about four thousand dollars a pop, and for a lake that size, I don't know how many we'd really need, so it's something I really gotta think about. I mean, I think they'd be great, I think it's a good idea.
Does it sound too expensive?
Well, we may need like eight of them, seven or eight of them, so it's kind of, yeah, you know, the size of the lake, it has to check, you know, if the size of the lake gets, you know, it could be kind of expensive. But, I mean, I still think it's a great idea, and it's not, you know, we're not gonna dredge, so we gotta maybe do a little supplement, decorative as well. And then this afternoon, we can have a very interesting meeting with a H2M, a sewer engineer consultants. Um, as most of you know, the eighteen point five mil is coming our way from New York State, the sewer, it's exciting, exciting to forget about sewers, and this is good, and it's pretty positive, there's so much you can do.
What's the criteria, like what, what do they say we have to do with that money? Do we have a lot of, when?
It's, it's just primarily for residential.
Just for homes?
Primarily the South Indian Town. Um, you know, it'll pay for everything. The hookup, the only thing that the homeowner's responsibility will be, will be the abandonment of the pools, the U.S.S. pool. That's an obligation, and, not even an obligation, but a risk that we don't wanna take, and you know.
What about the plumbing from the house to the connection?
Everything.
Really?
And, and up to and including that it will become a um, that we will, it'll be part of our sewer system, so if the pump breaks down, we're the ones that repair it, we're the ones that replace it.
Yeah, we'll actually own it.
We'll own all of it?
It's huge, I mean, I know, of course, I've come over to do, and uh, six hundred and fifty-six or eighty homes maybe was all done, you know, the road paved, there's a lot, a lot of them involved, and it's really, uh, the next few years have been really, uh, had a hectic, but we'll be tearing up a lot of village streets, and then we can, we'll do all this kind of stuff, but it's good stuff, I think. Um, the uh, garden park, you know, apartments.
It's a trustee living, I think it's a problem. No, they're, they're all part of, they're all part of this whole, this whole thing. And uh, but I, the biggest piece about it, about it is, is it will take care of all the homes, alongside delivering, and all the way up to homes up to Main Street.
Yeah, it's a huge portion of the village. It doesn't look bad, yeah, but it is a huge portion.
Is that big?
Yes. Yeah, I believe so, Laurie.
And those are, and those are all set to go.
Wow.
Yeah.
And what we're trying to do, in terms of cost on a yearly basis, is to make it equal to or less than what the pump out is, so.
It's sort of the people pumping their, pumping their pools, you know, even twice a year, that's over a thousand dollars, maybe fifteen hundred dollars.
We're trying to keep, keep the cost on a yearly basis, to the four to five hundred dollars a year. It's, it's something that's, that has to be worked out, once it's all done, we do all the factoring of the costs, and, and because we're gonna have to expand staff and do some other things, but if we can do that to weigh up, and homeowners really spending, like you said, between five hundred and a thousand, we can keep it, the four hundred, everybody makes it plus the environment.
And, and, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, exactly. And um, and along those lines, I've talked about this before too, you know, the revenue project, we, they're, they're open to two thousand dollars a year probably pumping out, um, and those people themselves, a long time. However, um, that project is ready to go out to bid, so that's a good sign, you know, we can, that'll start working before anything else, so, um, pretty positive stuff. Um, just one, you may have noticed that we um, wrote it till and down by the front of the van shell, and some of the wolfers, we didn't talk about that, 'cause I don't want to be, the land tech and the uh, uh, yeah, they, we, uh, this company, Land Tech, wanna, you know, the grass is down the ball fields, and in front of the van shell, so what do they take, we're looking to really get something hardy, and, you know, make it look more attractive, obviously. Um, so we've wrote it till, and we've got this company, Land Tech, and they've got a special, it's like a plug, just a deep rooted kind of plug for the grass, so hopefully So, hopefully, this would be something that'll be hardier and, and long lasting, and be able to take abuse of, that those properties take, and wolfers especially, and I mean, we're looking into, you're looking to really kind of dressing up the wolfers a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, just the air raiding alone is kind of...
Yeah. And, um, one little thing before my wish list, last meeting, I, I did mention a, the notion of, the idea of a plastic bag band. Uh, I did get in contact with South Hampton Village, uh, they told me about the resistance they met. I've, I've got some interesting, um, contacts, people contacted me, the pros and cons. Uh, I've done some little basic research, began about the pros and cons, uh, met with resistance on some, you know, so a lot of things that have to be weighed out about it. But, you know, I, I still feel like it's something that we gotta keep pursuing, keep looking into, and, you know. And, and again, I'll just keep trying to supply information as it comes, and we're trying to, uh, meet with these people from Southampton, maybe form a own committee here in-house, to really get the ball on, on. Tonight, Mr. Mayor, requesting approval toward the bid for the Skins Steel Loaded, and the Oaks, and the Birds Quicken, and the amount of three thousand nine hundred and eight dollars for a four-month rental, this is pretty much what we did last year as well. It's a motion.
A motion, that's correct. Uh, some of the, the circles, right?
Yes.
Motion, second trustee, your favorit?
Aye. Requesting approval for one seventy-five, one eighty-seven, South Ocean Avenue, L L C owners of the property located at one seventy-five South Ocean Avenue. This is Bravo, uh, to contact H two M for conceptual approval for an out-of-district sewer connection with the referral to the village by H two M, I guess they're, uh, considering working off the sewers, if that's, if that's what...
One second, favorit?
Aye.
Okay.
Requesting approval to waive the yard cleanup charges in the amount of one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars, property located at three, question Street? A motion?
Sorry, favorit?
Aye.
Okay.
Do you request approval to hire, uh, South Bay Machine Shop Incorporated to provide and score rails, and negate at the loading dock adjacent to the Patchard Theater, at a cost not to exceed eighty-one hundred dollars, I said airing in the back of, years ago, the valley, the valley came over, that couple...
The loading dock?
It's a trip has, the loading dock back there, is that a, some problems back there? Um, that's a motion.
Sorry.
Okay. Requesting approval to pay an additional two thousand six hundred and seventy-two thousand fifty-five cents to Falls Service Electric for work performed at Shorefront, Shorefront Park Wolf Field, for the lighting down there.
For the, we, we did light them?
Yeah.
Yeah, you did a nice job, and it's...
Motion?
Second, favorit?
Aye.
Okay.
Requesting approval to pay an additional two thousand dollars to H two M Engineering done in conjunction with phase one of the Riverrine project that is going to be, that's a motion.
Thank you. Favorit?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I just have the, um, monthly building department, um, summary, and, uh, it goes as follows. Building and housing summons is issued for the period October twenty-fourteen with six. Building permits issued for October with twenty-three. Superstorm Sandy permits issued for October with two. Plumbing permits issued with eight. Demolition permits issued for October with two. Rental permits issued for that in the same period with fifteen. Notice is a violation for that period with twenty-eight. Number of complaints received in that period with thirty-one. And the fees collected in that October twenty-fourteen period were A R B applications seven hundred and fifty dollars, building plumart, excuse me, building permits were seven thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars, fire alarm was six hundred dollars, fire inspections were five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, planning board applications four hundred, plumbing permits eleven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, rental permits six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, sign permits four hundred and five, zoning applications eighteen hundred, and the total for that period was twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Nice, that's, that's all happened.
Lori, any else?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, just wanted to mention that yesterday, uh, there was a very nice vigil at the, um, Little Church on Railroad and Unity Place, for the sixth, sixth anniversary of, uh, the death of Marcelo Lucero. Uh, you were there for part of it, it really was a very, very nice, um, it was just, it was just great. Uh, they have the kids involved, and, uh, all different people from all denominations, there are two Muslim clerics, uh, Bahai. It was the first time I saw a Buddhist, and he spoke, and, and everybody had the same message of peace and harmony, and it seems like Posello was very involved, uh, with youth, uh, he was doing something with, um, uh, anti-bullying films, uh, and we might work together to get some of those films to be shown. We sold one yesterday, they're shorts, uh, to have them shown maybe here in the village, maybe a plaza back out in SoCal, but he's going to get me some information, but it seems like he's, he's on his mission, and I think he's getting some fulfillment about, uh, you know, working, you know, in an educational aspect with youth, so, uh, it was a nice, uh, nice service.
In relationship to that, if you had the opportunity, take a look at the Banners, the next, next story, Embracing Our Differences, as they come from Southern Community College, and they really tell a great story. In fact, Posello's gonna be opening the school on August day morning. Every year that we put them up, and, and we get them when we put them up for the school, we take care of them, and they have, they have a, uh, an assembly with the kids to talk about the Banners themselves, and the stories the Banners tell about diversity, and about, um, their tolerance, and about, about those kinds of things. So, it's very much a, uh, learning, but if you really have an opportunity, it just solo them, you just really love them.
They really are, they're beautiful.
They, uh, but that will be, uh, Wednesday morning, at, at the junior high school.
That's great, good. And then the only other thing I had, wanted to mention was, we finally, um, off and running with the mural on the Stanley's Building, just as the weather is getting too cold today. Uh, then we had a local painter referred to me by Mike Kelly, his name was Severino Alpieti, and he, uh, prepped and primed the walls, sand blessed, it was water blessed, uh, got all the debris off and, and primed the whole thing at no charge, and we're gonna have his logo on there. And then J R Holsmacher Engineering is, uh, gonna be paying for the paint. And the artists got started, so we'll see how much they can get done when there's a couple of warm days here and there, so, uh, but it looks nice, they have it, they have it all sketched out. And that's all that happens.
Trustee, go.
Yes, uh, thank you, fellow trustees, ladies and guests. Uh, we have the, of course, looking forward to the holiday parade on the twenty-ninth. Uh, as always, we're looking, Don is looking for volunteers to help him with the lineup. It's, uh, Pretty Good Gate, we give you a vest, and, uh...
It's a bar.
It's right, and a pair of gloves and a hat, Santa hat, and, uh, we could always use help in, uh, keeping the crowds back as the parade goes through, and also with the lineup with the fire trucks, so, called Parks Department, Recreation Department, if you feel like helping out for the evening, it's a lot of fun, and it's, uh, great to see that side of the operation of the parade. Uh, just, to watch the kids is just fabulous. Um, David, like David said, Boat Parade is on the twenty-third, it's another great event. For us who live on the river, I look forward to it. Anybody can come over and watch it from my, uh, kitchen?
Yeah, sorry.
We did one here. And, uh, of course, there's the Kiwanis Club, the Toy Tribe, on the seventh of, uh, December, down at Shorefront Park, and it's a great run, and they, uh, make large donations to, uh, canned goods and wrapped presents to the needy. Uh, same day as the church tour. There's some churches down there, so... Um, we'll be, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request approval for Maria Justizia and William Hilton to renew their C P O certification at a cost of two hundred and fifteen dollars. This is the certified pool operator certificate that the two of us have had for the last, uh, four years. Uh, this results in a significant savings for the village in that we did not have to hire a pool manager who has this certificate. Um, and, once we hire them, they somewhat hold it over your head, that they're the ones with the certificate, and, take it from there, it's, it's better for us to have it. Um, so, and it's at a discount, because we're partying with the town to take the course, so it's about a hundred dollars less for us to take it with the town, so that's a motion.
Second, favorit? Aye.
I'd like to request approval for Maria Justizia and William Hilton to attend the L I O S A Downstate Boxing Recreation Conference in White Plains, New York, on November twelfth, at a cost not to exceed four hundred dollars. It's a motion.
Second, favorit? Aye.
Thank you. And request approval to hire John Gaten as volleyball security from October to April at a rate of eight dollars per hour at Sway Avenue Schools with the Village Volleyball League. It's a motion.
Second.
Favorit?
Aye.
And we finally request approval to hang the Fifty-second Annual Christmas Parade banner on Main Street.
Second.
Favorit?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear the comments for the board. Just close it. Counselor?
The lady.
Public to be heard. Okay.
Good evening, everybody, on the way to South Hampton Street.